I'd like to call this meeting, the June 27th, 2016, meeting of the school board to order. All members except Director Corman are in attendance. Please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask for approval of the agenda, I would like to call for a closed session this evening for discussion of, for the purpose of discussing negotiations. And that would be at the conclusion of tonight's board meeting. Would someone like to make that move?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of a closed session after tonight's meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. Next, I'd like to move, ask for someone to move approval of the agenda for this evening.
So moved, second.
Thank you. And we would like to, at this time, recognize student staff in public. And first off, I would like to make a statement. It's always a tragedy when our school district family loses an employee or student. The cause does not make it any less painful. This school year, we said goodbye to several students and dedicated employees. Each one of them left behind grieving friends, caregivers, colleagues, and coworkers. Tonight, let us remember their spirit and mark left on our school community. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, that will bring us to part A. The board business. Would someone like to make a motion regarding part A?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Part A includes our minutes, personnel items, field trips, contracts and agreements, finances, and grants. All in favor of part A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes, thank you. Brings us right to part B. First is the provider agreement between Hennepin County on behalf of Hennepin County Human Services and Public Health Department for ALC services in a subcontract with Headway Emotional Health Services.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the provider agreement with Hennepin County on behalf of the Hennepin County Human Service and Public Health Department to provide funds for ALC services, which will be provided by the district.
Second.
Thank you. And Tamara Sieve, our Executive Director of Community Services, is here to talk about this.
Thank you. Could you name Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board? You have in front of you the resolution to approve the provider agreement with Hennepin County. Again, this funding is for an ALC plus case coordinator who will work within Bloomington Career and College Academy and our alternative high school program to provide wraparound to county-involved youth. So this will be funding that is coming to our district. And the second item on the agenda will be for us to talk about who will be providing those services for the ALC plus coordinator. At this time, administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two on part B. Independent contractor agreement between Headway Emotional Health Services and Independent School District Number 271. Someone like to move that resolution? Director Shaw.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the provider agreement.
No, yep.
Next one. Accepts the independent contractor agreement with Headway Emotional Health Services to provide ALC plus services to the Bloomington Career and College Academy and to the Under 21 Alternative Learning Program.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Got it. She did.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Third. Go ahead, Tamara.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board, you have in front of you the resolution regarding the agreement with Headway Emotional Health Services, again tied to the first agenda item. Headway Emotional Health Services will provide one ALC plus case coordinator for county-involved youth, which will be integrated into our programming at Bloomington Career and College Academy and the Under 21 Alternative High School. Again, the focus is wraparound services and support for county-involved youth. At this time, administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Director Shaw.
Tamara, is this Headway, this is the first time we've worked with Headway?
Not within the school district, but for this particular project, and yes.
Right, okay, and so with, with, with the concept of Hennepin County referred students?
Yep.
What is that exactly?
Well, when we look at county-involved youth, there's multiple ways that our students could be involved with Hennepin County. So they're lumped into one big category, county-involved youth. So this case coordinator is going to work with all of those different programs to identify what students already exist in Bloomington Public Schools and in our programs, as well as possible a referral process of who would be a good fit for our alternative high school, who would be a good fit for Career and College Academy, and maybe a combination of those schools above, and maybe a combination of programming including Kennedy and Jefferson. So they will be a conduit, a support person for those students to be successful in our schools.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Number three is a 2016-17 site agreement between Community Technology Empowerment Project and AmeriCorps program of St. Paul Neighborhood Network and the Independent School District 271. Someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Director Bergstrom.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves an agreement between Community Technology Empowerment Project, CTEP, and AmeriCorps program of St. Paul Neighborhood Network in Independent School District 271 with respect to assigning one CTEP AmeriCorps member to perform services during the 2016-2017 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Tamara, still there?
I'm still here. You have in front of you a resolution to accept the contract with Community Technology Empowerment Project, otherwise known as CTEP. CTEP will provide a one full-time member to perform services to strengthen and supplement technology literacy for low-income families, recent immigrants, and residents who may have physical or mental disabilities. This member will be placed at Metro South Adult Basic Education and will be integrated into their programming throughout this year. At this time, administration recommends approval.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is a revised agreement between Independent School District 271 and Independent School District 280 for joint administration of community ed programs and services. Thank you.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a revised agreement with Independent School District 280 for joint sponsorship and administration of Bloomington-Richfield Community Education Programs and Services.
Thank you. Tamara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have in front of you the resolution to approve this revised agreement. We've been in partnership with Richfield for our community education program and services since 2003. We had, we did have one revision back in 2006. The current revision is due to the reorganization of positions in Independent School District 280 that they went through as part of a staffing process, the elimination of their school year aquatics program, and the separation of our driver's education programming. So enough slight changes within how we were working together as partners for us to have a new agreement. At this time, administration recommends approval.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a software contract between Illuminate Education, Inc. and Independent School District 271.
Madam Chair.
Director Bennett.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the software service agreement between Illuminate Education, Inc. and Independent School District 271 effective May 25th, 2016 through June 30th, 2019.
Second. Thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby and Gina Miller are here to talk about this.
Thank you, Chair Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board. For the folks in the audience and for our folks watching at home, Illuminate Education is a data and assessment tool designed to capture and analyze multiple sources of data to inform instruction. This will be utilized at the elementary level and integrated with the hub in Infinite Campus in order to have a well-rounded set of tools to meet the needs of teams to enter and analyze student progress data. This would be our first year with this contract with this company. And I have Ms. Miller here to help answer any questions you might have about the use of the software, the actual software. As you can see, I'm pinch hitting a little bit for Andy Kupas tonight, so Gina's here to help if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Director Bergstrom.
I did have a question. I called and talked to Andy briefly this morning, and the question I had, he was, he was really quick to heap praise on Gina's work. So there's a, there's a cost per student. We're going to start off with a certain number of students. And then if we choose to grow bigger, a larger number of students, what it said was the cost would stay the same. And the world that I came from, I'm thinking, oh, bulk discount. Shouldn't we get a discount? And Andy was, was quick to point out that this price reflects a negotiated discount and some hard work and energy and effort. Perhaps you can tell us how you negotiated that without giving away too many secrets?
Originally, the cost was $4.50 per student plus $1.50 per student for a databank. And we do not intend to use the databank, so worked with Illuminate to take that cost out of our contract. So to reduce it by $1.50 per student.
Okay, and that can add up when we add the extra numbers of students that are in this.
Yep.
So, I appreciate that work. Thank you.
Anyone else?
This was in part due to the transition from the TIES system, or is this kind of a new initiative that we're doing?
This is our current student data site is going away, and we're moving to Infinite Campus and the hub. And currently, TIES cannot provide this level of data analysis that we need with displaying this information graphically. And to build it in the hub would be really difficult to custom-develop that in the hub. So this was our, after research and looking at different tools, our best option.
Anyone else? Well, hearing any, no further questions? All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No, thank you. That brings us to long-term facility maintenance program 10-year budget. Someone like to make that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached 10-year long-term facility maintenance program budget and authorizes the current amount to be included in the district's long-term facility maintenance projects' application for long-term facility maintenance revenue.
Second.
And our Executive Director of Finance, Rod Zepkovich, is here to talk about this.
Chair Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is a preparation for the levy, preliminary levy in September. This is to provide a long-term plan that the state requires us to do 10 years for all facilities or deferred maintenance projects. This is a separate funding source that we can either do through bonding and also pay as we go levy. And this is our portion requirement for the 10-year period of time. Our next resolution, as you'll see, is our partnership with 917 that they, since they do not have levy authority, they are able to allocate a portion of their levy through us.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair, just, just quickly.
Sure.
I spoke with Rod earlier and asked a general question of average age of our buildings. And, and if I'm remembering right, it was 46 years?
Forty-four years, but that, part of that is every time you add on to a building or you remodel a building, they take that portion of that square footage and reduce the average year of it. So really, when we've added on to the buildings, especially a lot of the additions that were done in the early 2000s, that really reduced the average age of our buildings.
So it's, it's a lot to keep up with, and 44 years doesn't really, not that our buildings are in any state of disrepair, but they do need some constant maintenance.
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone?
Just to say, I did pose a question earlier because my house is, I don't know, 37 years old, and I think I've done $100 worth of electrical work in the last 10 years. And so when I saw that we were spending, you know, $2 million a year just on electrical, I had to ask a question, like, what in the world does that go to? But apparently, in this, in this type of building and, and business, that's not that uncommon.
Correct. And if you look at, you know, a million dollars of that, $2 million was to do the elementary. So you look at those elementaries aren't, you know, 40-some years old. They're a lot older than that. So it's, it's really going and gutting all the electrical issues of it.
And redoing, redoing them. Yeah, so it's probably a lot of things that we see, or that happen behind the scenes that we don't see over the summer and whatnot, so.
A lot of the work that's done on the, the elementary schools and that when we're doing a, a whole restoration is more of stuff that's behind the walls than is actually happening out front.
So, thank you for getting back to me earlier.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we have Intermediate District 917 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Budget. Madam Chair.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves Intermediate School District Number 917's Long-Term Facility Maintenance Program budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue.
Second.
As I mentioned, the, this process is more of similar in scale to what the district does. The state allows intermediate districts to pass through deferred maintenance costs to their member districts, and then the member districts can levy for those costs.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions or comments? Please.
I'd like to point out to the board that these are restricted dollars. These can only be used for building maintenance and cannot be used for operations of our schools. The second thing is, you asked about the electrical investment we're making. Some of our buildings are over 60 years old. And you may not be aware of this, but we have been experiencing outages at buildings throughout the year. And these are power outages where we have to determine whether we can actually operate the building and operate schools at that time. So it's, so we're addressing these things so we don't have that kind of challenges throughout the school year. So that's the reason for the investment.
Thank you.
Director Shaw.
Madam Chair, just to follow up then, so some of these, is there a typical audit? Energy audit, OSHA, anything like that that comes through on a regular basis and identifies any kind of potential problems?
We look at it on a regular basis of maintaining it. As the board approved, what we do is we use, you know, we've been on the process of doing one elementary a year. We then use the remaining dollars of approximately a half a million dollar, or $5 million to manage the rest of our buildings of trying to be preventative in the way of roofs and sidewalks, electrical. One of the big ones this year, and I think we talked about it during the budget presentation, was that we were, that Hillcrest was not on the docket for a couple of years, but they've been having a lot of outages in the way of their electrical. So what we're doing is we're setting up a electrical project this year to be able to, be able to bring a generator in and updating their, their boards earlier than, than we normally would have.
To answer your question, we have a licensed electrician on staff that helps in those consulting. We also consult with an electrical engineering consulting firm to assess our facilities.
Since this resolution is actually about the intermediate district, I just thought that maybe for people that don't know that much about the intermediate district, it might be helpful for some information. I don't know, since Dick is the rep, if you want to answer, or if you can, but an idea of how many schools belong to that intermediate district? And then their buildings, are they as old as ours or a little newer? Or, anybody know where that falls?
Well, we, we have, there's nine members involved in 917. As far as I know, 917 only owns one property. And so what we're doing is we're taking the best of programming from each individual district, and then would be that district's opportunity to care and maintain for those, those buildings. Am I, am I close on that, Rod?
Well, what it is, is that building that, that there is, there's deferred maintenance that needs to be done on that building on an annual basis. And up until this year, I mean, up until a year ago, they were only health and safety issues. The new legislation changed it to be able to, all districts can do actually deferred maintenance-type projects. So it kind of expanded the thing. So a lot of districts that, that didn't have the money to do that or had to use general fund dollars to be able to pay for those type of expenses, now are having this additional revenue to pay for that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Brings us to a committed fund balance categories. Would someone like to move this resolution?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the following committed fund balance categories for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. One, third-party medical assistance. Two, wellness dollars. Three, band, uniform, and instrument replacement. Four, operating referendum. Five, transportation. Six, transportation building. Seven, transportation bus purchases. Eight, staff development. Nine, athletics and activities. 10, Q comp. 11, site department carryover funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This resolution is in preparation for the 15-16 audit. What we're required to do before June 30th of each year is have the board approve committed fund categories within the audit. Once we get through the audit, which the audit will be brought to the board in October, at that point in time, the board will approve the actual dollar amounts within these categories.
Any questions or comments?
I thought of one that I didn't think of earlier is how, if at all, have these changed since the last time we did these? If you can off the top of your head, or is this pretty much, this is what they have been?
The categories have been pretty much the same since we, we started. As, as some of the, the items that we've committed dollars to have gone away, we pulled those off. The only other one out there is, last year, we had the site department carryover was kind of a last-minute one that the auditors made us record. We were having them as deferred revenue before. We just moved that into committed funds rather than have it as reserve funds. Or assigned funds, I should say.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. One more, we have the adoption of the 2016-17 budgets. Someone like to move that resolution? Director Bergstrom.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the proposed 2016-17 revenue and expenditure budgets for all funds.
Second.
Thank you. Rod?
At the last board meeting, the board was presented with individual budgets for the next school year. This resolution is just to approve those proposed budgets at that time.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Next, we have a revised policy 503.3, early admission. Thank you, Rod. Someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 503.3, early admission.
Thank you. And the superintendent's going to field this one.
I will, thank you. This policy was last reviewed by the school board 11 years ago in 2005. The purpose of this policy is to provide criteria and a process for qualifying children who are not five years old as of September 1st to apply to start early in kindergarten. Administration proposed three changes to the policy which the board policy committee reviewed and studied. The three changes are, first is routine, changing obsolete language with, and replacing that with current district terminology. The second is to replace language that prescribed a specific test that is no longer available. So it had to be changed, and the administration recommends that it be replaced with general language just identifying the type of test that is needed. And the third is to reduce the qualifying criteria from 95% to 90%. The board policy committee had a lot of discussion and research, and they are recommending the following. The first two recommendations that we move ahead with, and they're incorporated into the policy that you're reviewing tonight, the draft policy you're reviewing tonight, and that is changing the language to update the terminology. Second is to not specify a specific test. And third is they are not recommending lowering the percentile from 95th percentile to 90th percentile. What they are recommending to administration is that administration uses the coming school year to conduct research and present their findings to the board policy committee so they can make an informed decision on possibly changing the policy. I'll give you examples of the things that we will be studying. First is looking at the relationship between the cognitive assessment and IQ tests. Second is to do longitudinal studies on early admitted children. Third would be determining if charging parents for this assessment test may prevent some families from applying. Third is to determine if the application process should begin earlier to allow parents more time for planning. And third is to explore the feasibility of using our staff psychologists to do these assessments rather than contracting externals, for an external psychologist to do the work. We'll be studying all these things and more and reporting back to the board policy committee with our findings.
Okay. Do you have anything to say, Mr. Board Policy?
You know, it was interesting reading up on this and all the different opinions and how everybody does it different. And, you know, the, it, it's like the September 1st cutoff is not this magical number. Some states it's January 1st, some states it's July 31st. And, you know, so even in Minnesota, then, some of the school districts, you don't take a test. You meet with the school administration, and they, you basically do an interview with your, with your child, and they maybe do some, some sort of assessment, but it isn't meeting with a psychologist. And then they determine, in some school districts, it's 97th percent. and then they determine, in some school districts, it's 97th percent, and some people, there's some research that says, well, if you wait longer, then your kids do better. There's some research that says, well, but if they're highly intelligent, now all of a sudden, they become bored, and they do worse, so they're, it's actually better. And there's one guy that said, if we just had the top 3% of students start a year early, we would gain a million years of workforce experience in a single generation of our brightest minds in the country. And so it's just, it's all over the board. So this little policy, where you think it's not that big of a deal, there's a whole lot of research involved, and so I appreciate the, the work that the administration has put into it so far, and then it'll be interesting to see what they come up with for the end of the year. But, yeah, I would recommend going with this. Basically, what it does is, it's, it's pretty much the same policies we had before, it's just the, as Superintendent mentioned, the test that was, we said, we had, before, it was, you had to take the specific test. Well, they don't give that test anymore. And so, speaking with the, with the psychologist, they said, yeah, it's actually considered unethical to give that test, so it's not available. And then just some of the language things, and then keeping the, the percent the same. So it's, it's pretty much what we had with the idea, a, and the reason why we're keeping it is, is for families that maybe are, need to use this for next year, we would have something in place that they could use until we finalize it, so. Yeah, I would recommend, we approve it for now.
Director Sarn?
Well, as part of the policy committee, too, we did spend some, a good, good amount of time doing it. But one of the main functions of the board is to review our policies, and as identified, this hadn't been reviewed since 2005. So when we do come upon some of these policies that haven't been reviewed, there's a lot of changes that may have come from the Minnesota School Boards Association and their staff, legislative concerns, and so forth. So when we do review it as a committee, we do get involved in a lot of discussion on it. And so with this one in particular, even though it doesn't, there might not apply to an awful lot of students, it is a category that does require some procedures or a policy to administer.
So we plan to review this in a year, or, that's, that's the plan?
Yeah, probably, yeah, probably in the spring, would be my guess.
Okay. Did you have a question, Director Rannick?
Um, just a statement, more or less. When this policy first came up, I was actually against this policy. I think this policy first came in 1985, and I think kindergarten was a completely different world back then than it is now. I think nowadays kindergarten is more like what first grade was back then. So I'm, I'm against the idea of early entrance to kindergarten, and so I started asking questions, well, how many students are we doing this for every year? And we're at an average of one or two students a year, as I remember you saying. And so I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this this year, since we're gonna be reviewing and looking at the data for next year. And then after we get all the information, I can make a decision on whether I am for this policy or against it, because Minnesota statute is that you have to be five years old by September 1st to attend kindergarten, but school boards are given the authority to make an early entrance policy. But we don't have to have an early entrance policy. We could stick to the state statute and say that all kids have to be five by September 1st, if that was our decision, so. I'm for this for this year, and then we'll look at it next year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion? Hearing any further, without hearing any further discussion? All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? None. Thank you. All right. Next, we hear the summary statement of superintendent evaluation 2015 and 16. And I believe the chairperson of our committee, the superintendent evaluation committee, Jim Sorum, will read the statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, in accordance with the board policy 451, the School Board of Independent School District 271 has completed their annual superintendent evaluation for the 2015-2016 school year. This new evaluation format covered six performance standards and 23 leadership traits, and the superintendent has met or exceeded expectations in all areas reviewed, especially in the areas of sound financial management, establishing and maintaining good relationships with agencies and organizations outside of the district, and updating the strategic planning process, including vision cards to measure performance. Now, the board looks forward to continued initiatives and programs to close the achievement gap, and continued improvement in engagement between the board, superintendent, administration, and employees. That concludes the summary statement.
Thank you. Next, we will move to the School Board Self-Evaluation 2015-16. Pardon? No. The School Board did its own self-evaluation, and we concurred on most of the, the questions regarding board governance and policy, operational oversight, board governance, and superintendent relations, and community engagement. There were some comments made that we will continue to work on, the, the process, and work to improve our work within the board. Does anyone have anything else they want to say about that, or?
Madam Chair, just quickly, I, I just want to say, I really appreciate the fact that we have this opportunity. It wasn't available when I came to the board. That's not, I'm not trying to speak poorly of the board when I came, but I think this is important, that we all have an opportunity to share our opinion. I think it was shared in a professional manner. I like the information, and it's an opportunity to learn, so. It's just, sometimes it's nice to see it in writing.
And it just gives us a reminder of what things we need to work on, and what things we're doing well, so. Thank you for that. Yes.
And I would just mention, too, for the viewing audience, the board does draft several goals, so we have goals that we operate under for governance, oversight, operational oversight, policy, superintendent relations, community engagement. So we evaluate ourselves on the work that's been done this past year in all of those areas, and, and we had met most, or all of those, with a couple of areas that we wanted to do better in. So every year, we establish new goals, as well as the superintendent's initiatives. He establishes initiatives that he looks forward to. So we have a series of board goals, superintendent initiatives, that we're constantly monitoring and evaluating our, our work on.
Thank you. That will bring us to the School Board Committee Assignment Changes and the School Ambassador Pairs. In your packet, you should be finding new assignments, new schools that you will have in the fall, and the updated committee assignments that we decided on in January. There's changes to the AMSD, changes to the Legislative Committee, to the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, to the Early Childhood and Community Services Advisory, to Community Financial Advisory, to the Safe, no, I'm sorry, to Labor Management, to PTSA Council, and to the Education Foundation. So if you don't remember what they are, you sign up for them in January, and if you have questions, or if you want to trade, or something like that, let us know.
Well, the question I'm gonna have, are we allowed to do any horse trading?
Well, if, if you want.
I, I do want to, I, I did mention, I'm willing to trade two of these schools, because I had these schools before I finished my current liaison assignment. Doesn't mean I don't want these schools, but I, I've already been the liaison to Ridgeview and Valleyview Middle. So they, they know me well as their liaison, and I'm willing to go somewhere where I haven't been a liaison, if somebody wants to.
I think all the schools know you well.
I did, well, that's best.
And I'm, schools that I'm doing next year are the ones that you did this last year, so you don't want to trade with me, unless you want the same schools again.
I'll just, I'll just leave it out there, if, if anyone's interested in, but I'm, I'm certainly willing to go to these schools.
Well, we need to decide quickly, 'cause.
Well, and the main reason we did it, we're changing it in July, is so that we can be with the schools.
Get ready for the fall.
At the start of the year, rather than change in the middle of January.
Right.
Where we have to relearn and understand everything else. I did have a question about the Community Services Advisory Council.
Yes.
Now that the new agreement with 280 and 271, is that still considered the Community Services Advisory Committee, or is there Community Education, it used to be, or whatever the terminology is? It, it talks about a, Community Education Advisory Council.
Have you?
Are you talking about what's stated in the agreement?
Right.
Yes, it's called Community Education Advisory Council.
Which a board member.
Correct.
And citizens and staff and so forth are part of. So there's a board member from Ridgefield and from Bloomington on that council.
There's a board member from Bloomington and representation from Ridgefield.
Okay.
And it's the same as the Community Services Advisory Council, or is it something different?
It's the same.
It's the same, okay, so we're good.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
I was confused, too. All right. Anything else? All right. That will bring us to our board member reports. Is there any recording? You done?
You know what, I'm gonna go first, 'cause he's probably also going to say that he went to Cornerstone, so I just want to get it out there. We were invited to the Cornerstone fundraiser by KAO from the League of Women Voters. It's great, I didn't know anything about it, and now I know about it, and I know that it's a great organization for supporting victims of domestic violence. And so I was glad to have been able to go to that, that fundraiser and see what they're doing, and I was glad that they included us in their, in their work, so. That was what I did in the past couple of weeks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The Community Engagement Committee met, and main thing there is, of course, planning for the 100-a-year celebration of our school district, and then we also are asking Mr. Krubis to come into our next meeting and talk about some other community engagements, and some things that he's working on, and some things that we might also be involved in. And then I also met with the, some of the negotiation team, not all of them there, from the BFT, and Mary and Rod, with kind of a question and answer. I guess they had some questions that they wanted answered, so I also attended that. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'll echo Rick's sentiment with the Cornerstone meeting, it was a early morning breakfast, a really very compelling testimony by some very brave individuals. Also, met with the Community Engagement Committee, went over, among other things, some plans for the upcoming centennial celebration. Attended the Metro South graduation over at Olson Middle Auditorium, and it's, it's always, it's, it's fun to go to graduations, but it's, it's a, it's a blast to, to hear their, their stories, and just listen to, to, you know, the pathway that got them to their graduation. So that's always interesting. And then I went to Jefferson last Wednesday evening, and this was a sustainability conversation that was hosted by the city of Bloomington. This was the first of three, it just happened to be in one of our buildings, and I think all three of the conversations will be in, in, in district buildings, but it was looking for their 2040 conversation. There's a, there's a survey you can fill out online, and they're, they're interested in the questions that you have for what you think Bloomington should look like in the year 2040, from now until then. Seems like a long ways from now, but it really isn't. And so it was really, it was, there were a lot of good questions, a lot of things that, that I hadn't considered, and it was nice to see the public come out. From what I understand, there were more people, a lot more people than they really anticipated having there. So it was very, very interesting and informative, nice to see so many people from the computer, community, interested in their community. And that's my report.
Thank you. I just have two things to mention. Please don't forget, next, July 27th, one month away, is the Education Foundation's golf tournament. If you can't golf, we'd like to invite you to volunteer, or just come by for dinner that evening. We can talk about it later, if you have any questions about it. Also, July 3rd is SummerFET, and if, we do have a table reserved for us at the, on the grounds, so we can talk about that at another time, too, if you're interested in helping to stand at the booth. Thank you. That brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. One thing, several months ago, our district was cited by the state for not being in compliance with respect to safety procedures and guidelines for our transportation, student transportation program. This month, the state returned to do a review of our corrective action, and I'm happy to report that the state has determined that we're in full compliance. Thank you.
Can I have the business? Come before the board this evening? If not, this meeting's adjourned. We'll move to. We'll move to